Scared me.
No, they can't hear me.
Now.
Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? Good morning. We're going to start in about... Good afternoon. Good afternoon. We're going to start in about two more minutes. We are going to have a couple of people give a welcome. And we want to make sure that all those individuals are here. We're missing one person. So in about two more minutes, we've got to start. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. We want to go ahead and get started because we do have a rather full agenda today. Thank you for coming out. And this meeting is in lieu of an all-college-day event that we traditionally have at the beginning of spring semester. But as you know, that's a very, very busy time for the college, and this year particularly, with the short time period between the end of the holiday season and the beginning of classes. So we wanted to reschedule this event so that everyone have a chance, hopefully, for to get settled in for classes and get the semester started off well. It's also given us a good amount of time to get into the legislative session and to have a little bit more information than we would have in early January about budget outlook for the remainder of the year. So we appreciate your patience in waiting till today and appreciate you being here. And to welcome you, we also have representatives from the constituent organizations here at Thomas Nelson. First, I'd like to introduce Tom Kellen, who is representing the faculty senate.
Good afternoon. I welcome you on behalf of the faculty senate and the faculty executive committee, which is your representative body here at Thomas Nelson. As I look out, I see a lot of familiar faces, but I see some unfamiliar faces. So those of you who are faculty members, we welcome you and hope that your experience here at Thomas Nelson will be as pleasant and as productive as mine has been, as some of us are all faculty members. So I'm sure this afternoon, we'll be having an opportunity to ask a lot of questions and get a lot of information. So we thank you for coming and we'll have a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And now, on behalf of the mid-level managers, Dean Pat Taylor.
I'd like to add a warm welcome from the mid-level managers. There are approximately thirty mid-level managers, one or two extras maybe, on the king of us. So we're the smallest group, but we're very active. And if you are a mid-level manager, we invite you to join us at our meetings that you'll be hearing about in an email. So again, thank you for being here today and welcome on behalf of the mid-level managers.
And now, on behalf of the College Support Staff Association, Ms. Lily Rikuchi.
Hi, everybody. I'm supposed to say welcome to all our new staff members, B-14 and classified full-time. You are the group that we represent as Classified Club, excuse me, College Support Staff Association. And we represent your interest on the various committees on campus and in all the meetings with the president and his administration. So anytime you have concerns that you'd like us to help you with, please feel free to contact any one of our board members. You know, area rap with each one of your areas. If you don't know who that person is, you can go on the website to the Nelson link and look up the CSSA and it'll give you a list. So welcome aboard and welcome back to everybody else, and we look forward to seeing you at all of our various functions that we'll be having throughout the semester.
And now, President of Thomas Nelson Community College, Dr. Charles A. Taylor.
Excuse me. Well, again, as the classified staff mentioned, and also the faculty and mid-level managers just welcomed back, and we had a number of discussions in terms of town hall meetings. So I just really wanted to bring you up to date on where we are in terms of some of the things that are happening, really the state of the college address, and also some of the opportunities and accomplishments and challenges. But we had at the beginning the mission statement. I'm going to flip back to that mission statement because I just want to remind the college, for those that are often down here, the emphasis is that what we're really about and emphasizing to everyone, keep in mind as we move forward, no matter what our opportunities and accomplishments and challenges are, the emphasis that we're here to prepare students for success. And you can go through it emphasizing the global community, the workforce for the future, the comprehensive programs that we have here, but the key component is emphasizing quality, high-quality, affordable, accessible post-secondary education. But the emphasis there is on preparing our students and really serving the community. So my entire presentation is just going to reemphasize that emphasis on our mission. And so basically, for those who had enjoyable duty and enjoyable holiday, we welcome back officially as a part of Thomas Nelson Community College. The agenda today is quickly, just going to talk about some of the college's accomplishments and opportunities, talk about the accreditation process, the enrollment update, budget, legislative update. But I want to spend more time in addressing any questions that you may have to really give us an opportunity to have a dialogue here. So you may have noticed on Nelson link, an opportunity to send in questions. We have people who did that. But we also have cards around to give individuals. So you can have a card and send it up. And Cindy Caloway is going to read the cards and then I'll see if I can come up with some answers. And if some of the vice presidents are here, they can probably address some of the questions more clearly than I can, so at least give you more detail. So with that, on the accomplishments, I thought it was important, since I've been here since 2004, a lot of things have happened on the campus and the college over the last, really, three and a half years since I've been here. And I really wanted to go back and briefly reflect on some of the things that we as an institution have been able to do in terms of setting some priorities. And so I wanted to start on enrollment. And here you have, if people wanted to check, all of this information that I'm giving to you is on the Davis Community College Systems website. So if you want to question whether the numbers are correct or not. When I came here in 2004, we had eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-eight students. And our FTE was five thousand ninety-seven. One of the things I emphasized is that we needed to put community back in as community college and reach out to the community. And the numbers clearly reflect that we've been able to do that. You'll see in terms of head count, it's gone up significantly from eleven thousand five hundred students to over fourteen thousand one hundred students. We did have in 2005, 2006, we had a slight pickup in terms of our FTE. As you know, we were making a strong emphasis to get our systems in place. We decided and made a strong commitment to make certain that students were not on parole. And we basically made certain that we put in place a strong positive ag drop program, but also at the same time, looking at enrollment cancellations. And so with that, our FTEs went down, but we really picked back up again in '06, '07. And I'll talk to you a little bit more about '07, '08. But people say, well, what are you doing to help increase enrollment? One of the things that we had noticed when I came here is the end of '04, that we were one of the lowest, not the lowest, but one of the lowest in terms of colleges in the system offering distance-led, distance-education courses. And so we had, in terms of the percentages are shifted, but actually in terms of distance learning enrollment, where you see percentage should be actually students. That is a typo. So in '03, '04, when I came here in '04, we had only a hundred and thirty-two students. The VCCS percentage was approximately... Sorry, the numbers have been transposed. And I apologize. Percentage for Thomas Nelson is ten point four percent. And the percentage for the VCCS was twenty-two percent. It seems like it's split over. I apologize. The number of enrollments for '04, '05, we had a hundred and eighty-seven students. And Thomas Nelson, we had eleven point two. And the VCCS was twenty-five percent. So you can see that still we are almost twice as low as the VCCS average. In terms of '05 or '06, three hundred and ninety-six. And '06, '07 made a dramatic jump to six hundred and sixty-seven. Again, Thomas Nelson is twenty-two point four percent, and the VCCS is still at thirty point seven percent. So the VCCS is still going up. But again, we're making significant progress from jumping from ten percent to twenty-two point four percent in distance education. And if people could type into faculty, not only did we provide the additional supplies and equipment, we provided the additional support staff. We've had people told you about the summer programs that faculty has gone through, additional training. We are leading the VCCS in the use of life boards throughout the entire VCCS in terms of the number of faculty and staff and students utilizing it. And so we've made significant increases in that regard. On the next area, again, people say, well, you're emphasizing and pushing for enrollment. So looking at the transfer rate, you'll see in terms of the graduation year, these are the number of students who are actually transferring in terms of the VCCS average. You'll see the twenty-two point nine percent. Thomas Nelson started off with twenty-one percent of our students in terms of transferring. The percentage, 2004, 2005, twenty-two percent, twenty-nine point six percent. Again, emphasizing not only enrollment, but also emphasizing students actually graduate. And we don't have a slide up. We just got this today. But you've heard and you've probably seen in some of our annual reports, in 2004, 2005, the total number of awards that we gave in terms of certificates, diplomas, degrees. In '04, '05, we had a total of seven hundred and three of all the awards when students graduated gave their certificates. In 2006, 2007, this last year, the awards were over one thousand ninety-five. So again, I wanted to make certain that you understand of all the challenges that we have had, and all the challenges that are before us, we are fulfilling our college's mission. And you need to understand that we are fulfilling our college's mission, not only getting more students, but the key is that we're making certain that they graduate, that they transfer, and also that they're successful. And we're, again, going to continue to work on our distance-learning classes, and I'll talk a little bit more about that as well. But I wanted to emphasize to you, you go home and you have a good day or a bad day, the entire college is making a positive impact on this community and the peninsula. And so I just something, other accomplishments that we've had in this last year, not going back in the last three years, but this last year. The Southeast Heart of the Basin Center opened, TNCC camp connected. And I'm just going to run through these very fast, just to let you know, we thought we were going to have about twenty-five students in the southeast center of Newport News. And our first semester, we had over seventy. And this spring semester, we have over a hundred and fifty. So again, in less than a year's time, again, we're reaching out to the college community. The college's accomplishments, working with the Whitneyburg College Foundation and the Historic Triangle Campus. You have here the first aid students graduate from the nursing program at the Historic Triangle Campus, moving on, workforce development and held educational sessions, students from foreign countries. The next one we had, we sometimes tend to forget this. Did you see who's dancing there? But the key is that even throughout all of our work and our accomplishments, some people say, why do you put this as an accomplishment? Well, it's one of the things that we take the time to really celebrate, rest and relax, and celebrate the end of the semester. Going on, we had this year, we had an excellent program leadership award to Master Sergeant Asher Adele, 2008. We also, Professor Sam for Spain engaged in students going into the beginning of the spring semester as a part of the classes ongoing. TNCC invited members of the American Association of Women in Community College, starting a Hampton Roads chapter. Dr. Joan Peck and one of our students participated in the film of emotional ads. We have our TNCC players, some of our performers, student performers of the Haunting of Hill House, partnership with Thomas Nelson and University of Virginia, students had opportunity to work with University of Virginia faculty. And the next one, I'm going to pause a little and just show you some of the slides, recent slides of the Historic Triangle Campus in 2004. When I came here, people, you need to understand, we've been working as an institution on the Historic Triangle Campus, some people say twelve years, fifteen years. You need to understand, in 2004, we did not have a place to build the Historic Triangle Campus. There was no agreement, no land, and more importantly, we did not have enough money to build it. So I need everyone to understand, we basically had a concept and an understanding in 2004 with no land and no place. In less than three and a half years, we were able to acquire the land, we were able to acquire additional funding from the state legislature, we were able to do a, what do you call it, a water survey process in terms of having the wetlands movement. And at the same time, we got strong support to have the state pay for the wetlands mitigation. So we received additional funding, wetlands mitigation. And then we'll see some of the actual slides on Centerville Road. The next slide, you actually see they're putting up the elevator shaft, the stairwells. You also see on the next slide, an actual pouring of concrete. So if you ride by, then you actually see an actual building going up. It's no longer a concept, it's no longer an idea. So that's the second. One of the other things, going to the next accomplishment, and again, we've been renting Hampton Three for, some people say nearly ten, fifteen, twelve years. We paid for that building after state paid for it in terms of leasing three times over. So only until recently, in working with the legislation, were we able to have the state pay for the building. And now officially, I'm taking some of its funder, we actually own the Hampton Three building. But I want to pause here and emphasize to you two things, I think it's real critical. The relationship between the foundation and Thomas Nelson has not been as firm and as secure as we would like. So in working with the staff, working with the faculty, working with our board of trustees, and working with the foundation board, they were able to secure the funds to actually acquire Hampton Three before the state purchased it. Let me explain that to you. The owners of Hampton Three, at the time, were thinking about putting the building on the market. And our foundation board, in working with them, they said, okay, we're going to actually acquire the building with the state coming through to eventually purchase it back. So they didn't have to get into a bidding war, we didn't have to get into a bidding war, and they acquired the building. And then when the state came through just this length, in fact, a couple of months ago, we were able to acquire the building without going through a lot of turmoil because our foundation worked with us and made certain that they would work cooperatively with us in making that happen. The other thing that's not mentioned, but also they emphasize to you, and as I mentioned to you probably at another town hall, we, working with the foundation, they were able to acquire the land in back of basketball courts in back of Griffin, and working with Thomas Nelson. So again, we're now getting additional resources, additional help through the foundation and leveraging the dollars they have in the foundation to help us move forward as an institution. But let me tell you about some of the upcoming events that's critical, that you should be aware of. Again, strategic planning update, February 1st, a number of you will be there February. We have a homecoming African dance group and drummers coming on February the 8th. We still have a legislative visit, and we had one just yesterday. We have an open house on March the 28th, the employee awards ceremony in April, and also we have our commencement on May the 13th. I went through those very fast, just to let you know that a number of things are still happening here at Thomas Nelson. But I want to go to our SACS accreditation, in terms of a SACS accreditation update. And people will tell you, I do not like acronyms. You have so many here on campus, EDPs, CPPs, IEPs, IPeds, SELF, SAL, SUN, DSM, NAP, something, something, something. So I emphasize for people to use the correct terminology, so the Sub-Association of Colleges and Schools. And just to give you an update on part of the accreditation, I just wanted to emphasize the dates that we have here in terms of July 7th, 2006, July 7th, 2000, July 6th, 2007, in terms of our monitoring report. And on April the 11th of 2008, we're supposed to submit our monitoring report to the Sub- Association of Colleges and Schools. The college successfully answered the commission's question on our quality enhancement project, our QEP. And really want to thank all those who worked on the QEP in terms of the communities of learning. And however, the commission, our colleges, asked Thomas Nelson to demonstrate more comprehensively our compliance with standard 3.31 institutional effectiveness and to submit a second monitoring report by April 2008. One of the things we emphasized, we showed them all of the planning that we did, but we didn't take the time to say why we put through the planning process and what were the results of the planning process. But it gives us an opportunity to not only brag about how we did it, but also talking about the actual process. So you'll see on the next slide, compliance process and timeline. We started to really put together, we have a number of people working on it, and we're going to submit a draft by March the 14th, a second draft. And we'll actually have our first draft done by the end of February, February 22nd. On the next slide, some of the subcommittee members, I just wanted to show you, we have a cross-section of the entire college community working on it in terms of coordinating institution effectiveness subcommittee. And these are the subcommittee members who are really working on it, and it's under the leadership of Dr. Fontaine and Dr. Davis, and also we're working with Dr. Fleming, Vice President of Academy Affairs, in terms of our SACS liaison. Let me give you a brief update on our enrollment. And enrollment is one of the most important strategic initiatives, and just want to give you an update on where we are. Thomas Nelson, the owner of the Dateline 2009, the VCCS talks about serving sixteen thousand new students. Okay. Someone's knocking on the door, wanting to get in. Did they have me? Okay. Just in terms of enrollment updates, one of the things that we did, which is important to note, and we'll be talking a little bit about this in terms of the enrollment update, this last holiday break, holiday session, we offer limited services to our students. And basically, we served three hundred and ninety students, and also that resulted in two hundred and thirteen students requesting for classes during the spring semester. And I just really wanted to thank the faculty and the staff who worked over that holiday and really applied their commitment to Thomas Nelson. And as you know, our budget is really based on enrollments and our enrollment projects. And so, for the community college... Someone left a minute. Oh, it's hammering on the building. Okay. Timing is everything. One of the things that we wanted to highlight to you in terms of enrollment, and this is one of our challenges coming up, we actually had a budget, budgeted FTE for the summer 2007, one thousand four hundred and twenty, and the summer 2007, we had one thousand four hundred and thirty-two. So we were up during the summer. But as I mentioned to you before, for the fall, this last fall, we had it budgeted around five thousand one hundred and twenty-one. And Charles Murber, we'll be talking more about the budget a little bit later. But in terms of enrollment, we were at five thousand forty-nine. One of the concerns, one of the challenges that we'll have, I'll talk more about it a little bit later, is that the spring, it appears that we are still down. And that's why you have people talking about emphasizing second eight weeks in terms of getting our enrollment up, because right now, there's projection that we'll be at two hundred and twenty-four FTE down. But again, that is, we're very early in that process. And we're expecting two hundred FTEs from, at least a hundred and twenty FTEs, again, from doing enrollment, and another forty possibly from contract training. And so that will break, that will decrease that number where we're short. But I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get into some of the challenges. So with the enrollment challenges that we have, again, ties into the budget. So I'm going to pause here and let Charles Murber, he'll give you a brief update on the budget in terms of the second quarter report, because we said that we'll be talking about that. And when I get into some of the legislative challenges, I'll go back to the enrollment and I'll... So I'll turn it over to Charles Murber, who's right here.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have someone affixing a banner to the outside of the building. It's a privilege and an honor to come for you this afternoon. It's, I think, my third time, and I see so many familiar faces. And because of that, it's such a more welcoming environment to have this dialogue today. I certainly appreciate it. You may recall back at the old college day, back in August, we had said that we would come back by necessary timeframe quarterly to meet with everyone here, to have this exchange and have this dialogue. But dialogue, that's two ways, not just from President Taylor to the vice presidents. It's an all-encompassing, engaging process. And the one significant change that's occurred, we continue to come back to that each time, it's a recurring theme that occurred once the budget was posted, as you would call it, that reflected in a five percent reduction, which was implemented in October. And the original number was thirty-five million eight five seven, and the reduction was nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand seven hundred and eighty. And I just want to briefly just reiterate what was mentioned previously at our get-together back in November, was that that was done by three things. And it was done with the campus community involved. We did a variety of other expense reductions. We had an anticipated reduction planned, thinking that there could be this occurrence of a reduction. And we had a certain level of delayed hirings through the process in order to arrive at that number and have it implemented and have the plan accepted by the VCCS as part of the budget process. So therefore, the percentages haven't changed, but I wanted to use this slide just to reiterate the process back from August into November to today. And this slide here, you're just going to see the further breakout of the general fund, which is our actual support from the state. The non-general funds, which includes our tuition and fees, continuing education, our contingent revenue, and expenditure refunds and sales and service. The vast majority of the, as you would imagine, is fourteen and a half million on tuition and fees, which is close to eight percent. You'll see the actual budget to receive is pretty much on target at this point. And we can go to the next slide, please. This slide here is showing your programs on where the actual money that comes in and where it flows out through. The percentages remain the same, your instruction, your public service, your academic support, your student services, your institutional support and planning. Would you go to the next slide, please? This here is a further breakdown, and it goes... This here is a further breakdown, and it goes into your budget, your actual expenses. Now, one thing that we've attempted to do, to try to be as current as possible, is that when we look at the expenses, we include also what is known as an encumbrance of something that's going to be designated to pay a planned expense. So when you look at that, you'll see the expense versus the budget. Instructional support, I don't think I have to tell you what that means, other than simply put teaching, which is by far, you know, the biggest item that appears in this chart, but it seems to be well within the range of the percentages, noting that we have a balance of the year yet to go. Public service, on the other hand, you look at the budget, the expense, and the encumbrance, it shows, oh geez, you know, what do we have, an issue or a challenge, but you know, further due diligence, working with our business office and budget manager, it was very easily determined that there were certain upfront expenses that were included in that, that were front-loaded, therefore, the expenditure remaining is about 27%, but it's well within the range. If I take the encumbrances out, it's over 40%. I just wanted to share that as just a point of, as a pretty good example of how we monitor. Academic support, that includes your library, your audiovisual, your computing support, your academic administration, and of course, in curriculum development. And that too is well within the range where we need to be. Your student service area, which includes financial reg, counseling, career guidance, and student admissions, is showing the 47% balance remaining. Institutional support is at 42%, and that's for our fiscal auth, our executive management, your mail security and telephones. Your planned services of the budget of 3.7 versus the expense and the encumbrance of $2,029, that includes your housekeeping, your building repair, utilities, and property rentals, and that shows where we're at on the overall budget of 34.7, with the expense and encumbrance, with a remaining balance of about almost 46%. Turn to the next slide, please. This slide here shows your salaries of $28 million, what your expenses are to date, and I just want to remind you, that includes 110 faculty, 200 classified, 67 B14s, and approximately 347 adjuncts, and 43 faculty administrators, for a grand total of 760 people. Your other expense at $6,200,00 versus the expense and encumbrance of 3.8, is showing 38%, 39%. And the reason that, again, is that there are certain expenses that were front-loaded from the beginning of the year, like our copier, the copy of lease contracts, our workers' comp premium, general liability, several good examples, but big ticket items that would reflect on why the remaining balance is what it is. And I think that's my last slide. And as we progress, if there's questions and concerns, we'll certainly speak to those later. Thank you very much, everyone.
The presentation, as I told people when I came here in 2004, I was going to be frank and straightforward with you whether this news is good and bad or different. And so, you heard this budget presentation, questions may be asked, what does it all mean? Meaning that, two things, one is that we have been taking a closer look at the budget, and again, this was the second quarter that ended... So here you go.
December 31.
December 31. Keeping in mind, there are three things that are at work and at play, and you'll hear a little bit about the legislature before we get into it, and I want to give you these things. One, as they mentioned, in terms of enrollment, that's at the end of December. We're already short in terms of FTE for the fall, so we did not make our enrollment for the fall of 2007 that will have an impact on our budget. So that's one thing. The other thing to keep in mind, that we had to cut already from our budget, 934,780 dollars, 5% of our budget was already cut. So I keep, give you that in mind, and as our projection, whether they are off 100 or 200 or 50 on our spring semester, is short as well. So I give you all of those in terms of a bank draw, in terms of our budget, and so I'll get to you without saying a little bit more, but let me tell you about some of the things that we're doing legislatively, and then I'll get back to our budget after that's discussed together. And I'll turn it over to Cindy Cowley, just to give you an update on the legislature and how some of that would have an impact on our budget as well. Thank you.
Good afternoon again, everyone, and it is a pleasure to, I guess, greetings from Richmond. I feel like I'm spending a lot of time there, and I can assure you that a lot of folks here, the President, college board members, and students, faculty and staff, are all working very diligently while the legislature is in session to try to push through our individual initiatives for Thomas Nelson, and also those initiatives on behalf of the entire Virginia Community College system. And I'm not going to bore you with what you've already read and heard about in the paper, I will tell you that having just returned from Richmond yesterday, that the mood is quite somber, it's not as celebratory as you would hope we're going into a biennial session, so what you're hearing is true, that to a one, we heard from our legislators, that there are certainly more needs and there aren't funds available right now to meet all of those needs, so it is going to be quite a belt-tightening year. Having said that, I want to share with you that Thomas Nelson is not backing away from its priorities that we established, well, have had in the mix and have had established for some time, but that we presented to our legislators, and that we presented to you at our last town hall meeting in the fall. But I can share with you where those initiatives are falling in terms of the governor's budget, and also in terms of other initiatives that have been put forth by our legislators. Next slide, please. This is the number one priority for Thomas Nelson, also, I'm happy to say, the number one capital outlay priority for the Virginia Community College system, and that is the $5.64 million to equip the first historic triangle campus building set to open in spring of 2009. It doesn't make a lot of sense to put the kind of money that the Commonwealth of Virginia has invested into a building and then not have it available and ready to open to service the citizens and our students, so this obviously is a priority. There are also seven other buildings within the Virginia Community College system that are scheduled to open by November 15th, 2009. And due to that fact, Governor Kane, when he announced his budget on December the 17th, crafted a means of equipping those buildings. And it's a little different from what we've done in the past here at the Commonwealth. Typically, we ask for an allocation or appropriation of general funds during that biennial year to pay in hold for those needs. What Governor Kane is asking, given the resources and the concerns about the income for the Commonwealth, is asking that this be funded through bonds, but not funded through the bonds that you've heard so much about, the general obligation bonds that require a popular vote of the people. These are special bonds that had already been created under Virginia law as part of the Virginia Constitution, and this is set up by the legislature called the Virginia College Building Authority Bonds, VCBA. These only require passage of the legislature in order to approve their use, in order to fund these projects. And so, each of those eight building projects, or equipment projects for new buildings coming online for the Virginia Community College system, has been proposed by the governor to be funded through the VCBA. And the good news about that is, we will know at the end of this legislative session whether that has been passed or not. We will not have to wait until November, when the other initiatives that have been proposed to be voted on by the people actually takes place. Next slide. This is initiative that is new for Thomas Nelson, it was not in the six-year capital outlay plan for the VCCS, but I'm happy to say that we have had a budget amendment bill sponsored in the House by Delegate Hamilton and by Senator Norman in the Senate, so that we currently have two budget amendments requesting $1.2 million each for each of the two years of the biennium, for a total of $2.4 million to establish a dental hygiene program at Thomas Nelson Community College. We've also put in a request for federal dollars to match those funds, and so hopefully, we will know by the end of this legislative session whether or not that bill passes, and then we should know in September whether the federal funds can move forward as well. This is a new legislative priority for Thomas Nelson, but it is in support of the Virginia Community College and the, and all of higher education, in backing Governor Kane's general obligation bond proposal. This is what you've read so much about, $1.65 billion over a number of years, that would basically build new buildings or renovate existing buildings at each of the colleges in the Commonwealth. All 23 community colleges have a project, as well as all of the higher education institutions, senior institutions in the Commonwealth as well. For Thomas Nelson, the building that is part of the governor's bond package is renovation funds for the Hampton III building that was just recently required. This is the building which is currently in the Virginia Community College six-year plan, and so as such, it is the only one that has been caught up as part of the governor's bond proposal. So when you read $8 million, don't go back and add 5.6 for the historic triangle equipment, 2.4 for dental hygiene, and think that's in the general bond package. It's not, it's something completely different and actually good for us, because this was something that would not have been reached by the regular biennial session as part of general funds. So we're very excited that through this bond package, we may be able to see that money for the renovation project at the Hampton III building a whole lot sooner. Having said that, I will alert you to the fact that there are competing bills in the legislature in terms of how the Commonwealth should begin to look at paying for capital improvements for its public buildings, and you'll hear a lot about this. There has been a bill that's been introduced right at the 11th hour of new bill introduction on January the 18th, that was put forth in the House, that basically restructures the whole system for being able to prioritize buildings to be built with public funds. And while the $8 million for Hampton III is still a part of that proposal, there are some buildings that are originally in the general obligation bond presented by the governor that are not. There are four colleges whose projects were kicked out as a result of this new legislation. Again, it'll all come down to how they vote and negotiate, but we'll be following them, and we're very fortunate that our project is present in both of those initiatives. Next slide. Now, the next two slides will remind you, these are our top two capital projects after equipping the historic triangle building. They are currently not present in the six-year plan for the VCCS, and that six-year plan goes through 2014. So when you think about us wanting to go ahead and lay the groundwork for these, we've already been talking to legislators about how badly we need the room and the building here on the Hampton campus, the academic student commons building, and the next slide, please, the second 120,000 square foot facility at the historic triangle campus. We know that with the enrollment growth we've experienced at the historic triangle campus just this year, in projecting forward, by the time we open the first building, we'll be at 2,500 students, which is more than the capacity that we can serve with that first building. So we've got to start trying to work now in order to get the groundwork laid for being able to secure funding for that second building. I will say that one of the initiatives that has been proposed in competition to the governor's bond could possibly open some doors for Thomas Nelson to be able to get these projects pushed through sooner. That's all I'm going to say about it at this point, and this is me speaking and analyzing the legislation. Go ahead. Well, I'll go ahead and turn it back to the President, but I'll just briefly let you know that at our last town hall meeting, you'll recall that I also listed about 11 projects that the VCCS was proposing on behalf of the system in its entirety, things such as student financial aid increases, faculty and staff increases, funds for campus security projects, operating funds for new buildings coming online. The governor's budget does include some of those initiatives, but not all, and certainly not to the level that was requested by the Virginia Community College system. One that I'm sure is close and near to near to your heart and that you've heard about, the Virginia Community College system is hoping to get faculty and staff salaries up to the 60th percentile by 2012. In order to do that, it would require faculty and staff salary increases of 8.6% by 2010 and 5.9% by 2012. You've already read, and the governor in his proposed budget included a 3% salary increase to be effective July 1, 2009. Now, as you're used to the fact that the Commonwealth typically has raises that go into effect at late November, early December, so not only is this less than what the Virginia Community College system has requested, it actually delays the actual increase going into effect by an additional six months. There's some other things that are quite concerning. We did get a little bit of money for student financial aid, about half of what we can ask for, and what SHAD is projecting that is needed. There was no funding in the governor's budget for the campus security measures that the chancellor's task force has recommended. There is a budget amendment, however, that has been introduced to ask for funds to be allocated from general funds to pay for that initiative, however. There is money in the governor's budget to fund some career coaches, and also hopefully at least one new middle college initiative in the system, but again, the $7 million annually to fund workforce development programs was not funded at that level. There's also money in the governor's budget to fund at least part of the costs, as we projected on for the first two years of the transfer grant scholarships that the legislature passed last session, and which should go into effect for those students who enter this fall and who will be graduating in 2010 from our institutions. Remember, the promise was that if they graduated, they were eligible, and they had a certain grade point average, they could receive, in some cases, up to $1,000 for their tuition at the four-year school, in some cases, up to $2,000 for nursing and engineering and some other programs. Again, the governor has included some funding for that initiative, but not the entire amount. Most troubling for us, and for a lot of other schools, in fact, I think there are 30 schools in the Virginia Community College system that have new buildings coming online during the 2008, 2010 biennium, is that there are no funds in the governor's budget whatsoever for operating costs for any of these new buildings coming online during this period. And I know that the system had asked for about $12 million, and there is a budget amendment that has been put forth to try to get that money funded by the legislature, but it was not included in the governor's budget. I'm going to go ahead and stop at that point, but I'll be glad to address any questions that you may have, and the President will as well, about any other specific areas about the legislative initiatives, and I'll turn it back over to him.
Thank you. She gave you a lot of information, and again, emphasizing that a lot of things are happening within the VCCS, a lot of things are happening in the legislation as well, in the General Assembly. The one thing that I'm going to do quickly is to highlight a couple of minor things that I think are critical, and she highlighted them and we mentioned. The historic triangle campus is growing, and I pulled down this sheet just this morning, and it'll tie into all the legislation and all the budget and all the things that we mentioned. The, as you know, we mentioned for the fall semester, we were down in terms of FTE for the college as a whole, but for the historic triangle campus, again, they're growing, and I'll just give you some numbers here that... I'll just give you some numbers here that you may not be aware of. Historic triangle campus, this last fall semester, 50, they increased by nearly 20% in terms of pet count, also in terms of FTE, they increased by nearly 21% in terms of FTE. Just again, going down in terms of full-time, part-time students, all of their numbers are up, male, female, day, the evening program was down, but the number of students taking classes during the day are 26, 28%. So they have had a significant increase in terms of their enrollment and their students there as well. Overall, for the college, we had some decreases for the fall semester, but one of the things that we're seeing a trend, that probably many of you've seen a trend, is that we have a younger population at Thomas Nelson coming through our halls, and that is having a significant increase on how we treat students, how we react to students with services and programs. And that's why you see a number of activities on campus. Students are getting involved in terms of homecoming, a dance group that just started on campus, cheerleaders. Our full-time student enrollment is increasing. This fall semester, we had an increase of nearly 4.5% in terms of more students going The key component is that we're a four-part institution in the state. Students are still enrolling, not at high numbers as last year, we're up by 8%. Not at those numbers, and a number of things have an impact on it. But the key component, as an institution, we need to continue to work as a unit as efficiently and effectively as possible. All the accomplishments that you've seen and I've noted and emphasized to you, I didn't make it happen as president. You here in these audience and those who are not able to be here, a number of faculty are still teaching, they're not here today, and some staff are not here today, you made it happen. So you need to be able to look back and say, we're making a difference, you're making a difference, as I mentioned to you in our town hall meeting, the things that we've been able to do, we've been able to move forward because of you. But we have some challenges ahead, and I'm going to be very honest with you, we have some major challenges ahead. Not only did we cut back in terms of 5% from the state, as I mentioned, the $900,000,000, but again, in terms of our budget enrollment, our projections are short and we may fall short in terms of those. The one thing, I've been in Richmond, we before last, this weekend, as a matter of fact, it was later yesterday, all of these senators and all of the delegates have been telling me, prepare for additional cuts. They didn't say how much it's going to be, whether it's going to be additional 1%, 2%. Some state agencies are being told 3%, some are being told 5%, some are being told 4%. We really do not know. But I don't have a crystal ball. It's a possibility that there will be no additional cuts, but if you've been reading the papers, the state is saying they are not having as much revenue coming in as they projected. So as an institution, one of the things I'm going to ask you to do... I don't have official title, but I'm going to ask the task force to put it together and factor it immediately to help us look, and Gina, who and I were talking, and if you read the papers, we talked about something similar, that he's talking about for next year. I'm putting together the task force immediately to look at how we bring in new revenue and look at our expenses now. We're not going to be in April and May and have to make decisions. This is still in January. We're going to make some decisions now. Some of those decisions may be very difficult to make, but instead of assuming that there's a small group of individuals, we're going to ask faculty and staff to look at Thomas Nelson's desk, where can we make adjustments, what ways can we make additional revenue? We have the advantage of a second eight-week program, we have the opportunity to do more contract training, we still have military programs that we can do, we can do additional outreach. But this task force is going to really help me and help the administration to look at where we are today and really get our hands dirty and really look at what adjustments we can make. The only way we can make these adjustments is that it has to be an institution-wide opportunity for us, an institution-wide for us all to get involved in it. And so we're not going to have, you know, numbers of 20, 30, 40 people. So I haven't come up with the exact number, I'll be in the president's cabinet tomorrow, but by the beginning of next week, you can even ask the faculty executive group, faculty senators, thank you for your names now, staff, thank you for your names, the management managers, thank you for your names, thank you for your names to really be a part of that task force. I don't want us to be at a point in May starting to make decisions, try to come up with an additional 800,000 dollars. We've already spent three-fourths of our budget, so we need to make some adjustments now. Whether or not the state comes back to us with any decrease in terms of 3%, 4%, 2%, we have to look at our budget chairman today in terms of our own, where is our budget, our spending, etc. So we may make some adjustments quickly in terms of curtail, some about spending, curtail and some about open positions, travel, etc., etc. But I don't want to do it in the vacuum. I want the college community to be involved in that decision-making process, whether it impacts me individually, the college senior staff, staff, faculty, or anybody to be involved in those decisions. But you always certainly say, the two questions that I always ask, and you've heard this over and over, some of you get caught up here, the first question is, what is in the best interest of our students? The second question is, what is in the best interest of Thomas Nelson Community College? Those will be the first two questions that I'll ask, the task force will ask, and again, keep the mission up. Are we able to fulfill our mission and keep our enrollment up? And people say, when we keep pushing enrollment, that's how we get the dollars. That's just the bottom line. If we wanted to cut back on enrollment, we wanted to cut back on the dollars, because the fourth thing that we have is a three-year enrollment average. The state, if they say they're planning on cutting, we've already cut 5%. They're already cutting. Make no mistake, you're not getting those dollars back for the next coming year. So we're already down 900-some thousand dollars starting from the '08-'09 year. If they ask us to cut an additional 3% or 1% of $800,000, that means we're starting off in '08-'09 by a million seven. So I'm going to share all that information with you, but it's important that you have the college community be involved, be a part of it, and let us join to make decisions about how we move forward. Can we do it? I have no doubt. Because you need to keep in mind, when we look at the numbers in terms of enrollment, and look at the numbers in terms of transfer, look at the numbers in terms of retention, we as an institution were able to make those increases serving students when we were going through a terrible time in terms of audits, funds, dollars. If you look at the long lines and the rates, the difficulty students could register on time, thanks to those, we've been listening online. As an institution, the community still responded because internally we handled it, we pulled it together, we did a number of things, we made some adjustments, we added some things, changed some things, and we were able to still service the college community and still service the community and the region. That's critical for you to understand. And for those who've been here, how many have been here for longer than 10 years recently? And for those who've been here longer than five years recently? The key component, some of you went through some very, very difficult times back when we had to have three separate cuts in one year. And still, Thomas Nelson was able to grow. So you've gone through some difficult times. So we're looking for that expertise, that history to help us get over the hump where we are now. We believe that we want to grow. I know we want to grow. Historic triangle campus is going to grow, Hampton campus is going to grow, and as an institution, we want to grow. We just need to make certain that everybody's on the exact same page. With that, I'm going to pause because what I wanted to do is give you an opportunity to ask some questions and then give you any background in terms of what you should ask or not ask. No matter what your question, I want you to address it. If I don't have the answer, I'm going to ask one of the vice presidents to respond to it. And so any questions that are still out there, we got people picking up hard, sitting in the hallway, it's going to be, read some of the questions that I'm going to try to ask, answer them. And so feel free to ask any questions if you need clarification on anything that was mentioned here, whether the student budget, legislative, or what I mentioned, feel free to ask the questions. So with that, send it to you.
And I want to make sure everyone knows, these are questions, the question that I have right here, questions that were submitted to Nelson and Lee or directly to the office institution on basis of by 2:30 today or were dropped off in the box right prior to the session. If you submitted your question after 2:30 or it was right before the session or during the session, we'll have folks checking them, or if you still want to ask, we've got money for those down here, we can submit them on paper or you can ask them yourself. The ones that I have right here are just those advanced questions that we received. Dr. Taylor, when more colleges offer students the opportunity to pursue degrees online, why does TNCC outlook to provide an online education? How close does TNCC to providing students with the ability to pursue an education completely online?
Thank you. Dr. Taylor, do you have any answer for me?
As I do, I already have it. Because of the fact that some of our clients, I have been asking about it, will have a complete online.
We're going to try to make it as wide as we can.
I can talk up nobody's ever played it good here. Anyway, you did complete AS degree online already. You can get my business, general studies, science, social science. We're completing education 200s, and we'd be able to complete a degree in education. But because of the fact that biology poses a broad online, two lab courses, we're able to complete, now I have to stop talking. We now have to complete the program online. The ANA is something different because it requires a third, a fourth semester language class, and those are going to be very difficult to get, or completing first and second semesters of Spanish, completing speech, both two other years, maybe problematic, there's technical issues with the rest. But you can also get an AAS in commerce, e-commerce, web design, an AAS in microcomputer application, plus certain lawful certificates to support that. So the next question of, where are we? The question is, we already are.
Thank you.
This is also a question about academic programs. Is TNCC developing new programs of study such as a degree in modeling simulation, video game programming, information security, et cetera, to keep a step ahead of those companies needing workers with these special skills?
Yes. The question, the answer is we're not developing it right now, we're in the process of review. Thanks to Pat Taylor and of course from ODU, from NASA, we're already in the process of modeling simulation, and we're really quite a ways down the way. We're waiting to find out if any kind of funding, if they get required, if it will help us. But Pat and her group have been working on it. Video game is something that can or cannot be problematic, everybody thinks it's a hot thing, but in some ways it may or may not be. But of course, our computer arts program, we already have students who are already, in fact, at the student film festival, we had students who were doing one, one student who did video game. So we are doing some of that directly, but it's not necessarily a separate degree per se. And of course, over in business, public service, social science, they are looking at information security, there's a number of things that are being looked at, and so they're being looked at. The problem is, we use a very high-cost program. If you wanted to get into video game, you've got to have one super armor or server vehicle to do that, so there's cost of all those programs, modeling simulation is the same way, it's extremely expensive, but they're being looked at. Certain modeling simulation is one we are sort of gunning to, some of the others will require more testing.
The other thing that's important, you should be aware of, and we are using modeling simulation in some of our active programs in terms of welding, we're using that process and training developers to go through, using modeling simulation right now and working with developers. Next one.
And I do not pose this question, Dr. Taylor. What is the college doing to remedy the shortfalls in the marketing budget? TNCC does not seem able to effectively compete with the other VCCS community colleges in the tidewater area, i.e. TV commercials, radio, et cetera. It appears we are happy to be out marketed by TCC.
Good question. Let me emphasize one thing to you, that people sometimes tend to get, we try to compare ourselves with Thomas Nelson and TCC. Tidewater, I can't get the name of it. TCC, Tidewater Community College. They are the second largest community college in the state. They are three times larger than Thomas Nelson in terms of FTE and almost three times larger in terms of pet count. They have a very, very large foundation. We have just really re-energized our foundation basically a year and a half ago, two years ago. So their marketing budget is much larger than our marketing budget. Keep in mind, only until two and a half years ago, then we made an emphasis on marketing in Thomas Nelson, because we really didn't have a marketing campaign, we really didn't have a recruitment campaign, we didn't... Two and a half years ago, our recruiters, I think we had one part-time recruiter. We didn't have our... Is somebody in the back? We had half-time recruiters, so now we have two full-time recruiters. Getting back to the marketing, we now have made conservative efforts, not only our board, but our local board, this last two years, they put in an additional $100,000 to $150,000 into marketing and made one of their part. So only until recently that as an institution do we put money into marketing, so we made some conservative efforts. Do we have a long ways to go? Absolutely. Most people will know I don't settle to be second behind anyone, but when they're looking at hundreds of thousands of dollars in marketing, they actually contract out for a marketing program to run a lot of their advertisements. We can't even pay to get some of our advertisers in the newspaper, but you've seen Thomas Nelson on radio, you've seen Thomas Nelson in some of the TVs, you've seen him on board terms of print ads, and again, that is to really commit the marketing and the public relations folks to really be outmanking them, they're running with their resources. So we have a lot of people going a lot of great batches of limited resources. And I believe we're getting there. We have been doing some joint things with some other community colleges, and we have a ways to go. Absolutely.
And I'll vouch for the fact that just three years ago, the marketing budget here at Thomas Nelson was $20,000. Two years ago, it jumped to $200,000. This past year was at least $17,000, given us a budget that we've all experienced. So there is a concerted effort and dedication on the behalf of all areas of the college to realize the importance of marketing. So we're getting there, but we had to start from literally from scratch. What is being done to keep the TNCC website up to date and accurate? It seems to be lagging in theory and turning potential students away because information on new programs is either not posted or extremely slow in appearing on the spot.
All asked by Captain Finbro, Vice President for IT.
Well, I have to admit, we got behind. We had until, I guess, Jackie, come on, September, until September, we had one person who was our web person, who is also our streaming media person, who is also our distance learning help person, who was also equipping the Mac apps in the late... who was also equipping the Mac apps in the late summer. And we just got behind because David is only one person. And however, got a lot of supporting emails from the deans around November timeframe that this really needed to be caught up. And David has made significant strides since the Christmas, Thanksgiving timeframe. And we are working closely with Ken Allen to try and pull things in as quick as we can. We are still behind on some of the older programs who are aware of that. And David's top priority right now. So I don't have a better answer. I wish I could say, you know, that we stayed on top of it or stood, stayed on top of it during the year. But we have, we got behind. Well, we're catching up. And I do want to make a comment about the web in general. We just had a kickoff last week. Many of you here, I think, attended the meeting, kickoff meeting, we had for the new web upgrade. We've got representation from all the areas to participate on our upgrade. We're going to have input from all of you as, or representatives certainly, to make sure that our web upgrade, that we're going to plan it all out in the office timeframe, is going to give us a new look and feel for our website. And we're also going to be distributing some additional opportunities for those of you to do content development and help us in making sure that we're keeping the content on our web updated at all times. So you'll hear more about this project, like I said, we had kickoff last week. We're really excited about it. It's a great opportunity for us because, as I told the group last week, our website, you know where we are at this. Our website is what the rest of the world knows about us in many cases. It's the first thing many people see. We're coming in and wanting to know a little bit about Thomas Nelson or the opportunities that they have to get education. And so, it is a major project. We're focused on it and hopefully we'll be able to see a greatly improved web presence this year. Thank you.
Before you get to the next question, let me, and as I said, we have a marketing piece. I just, as I said, I just wanted to commend and comment the marketing people, public relations people who are going to the next. I want to publicly commend David Brown as well and his staff in terms of, if you looked at our website three years ago, it was not, it was, it was not good. And that's just the bottom line. If you really look at our website now in terms of the best effort to be on one person, individual, our website was mainly recent now. So anybody who's been on the website, they're all at that, it takes constant effort to keep it updated, especially with all the new programs. We had fourteen new programs just last year. So the things were changing about the beginning, one more. And so, I, you know, publicly, I don't have a problem committing that we don't take enough time to do. So I am going to publicly, publicly commit to do it.
Will we be receiving raises next year? A December article in the Daily Press made it sound as though state employees would not be receiving any pay raises for a later night.
Currently, from the governor's budget, the answer is yes, based on how the budget is standing on the governor's budget. As you were saying, for '08, '09, there are no state increases of cost of the, of three percent, four percent. That's not there. But again, we have senators and House delegates putting in budget amendments to try and change that. Currently, as you're saying, told there's a different vote. There is, there are no increases. But if an increase is come, we'd not have to wait until November of '09. The government also may have to do my own.
Why is TNCC, a college this size, so top-heavy? How is TNCC compared to other VCCS colleges in this regard?
Okay. Interesting question. In terms of top-heavy, I haven't asked certain that we are top-heavy. The one thing that we did do that's different from the other VCCS colleges back in two thousand four, two thousand five, in terms of student surveys, was comments made by even staff and even one of the surveys that was done, I think, by CSSA before I came here, there was always a big issue and emphasis on services to students. And it was not a committed effort from students' conferences, even from community conferences, on student affairs rate. So I went to our board, state board, and chancellor and asked if we could break the state mold. The state mold for all the other twenty-two community colleges that they have a vice president for academic and student affairs, that is standard mold for the digital community colleges to approach. In looking at the needs of Thomas Nelson, we were thinking of an unlarged institution, basically a single largest institution at the time until we actually ended our kind of sort of training campus. So I put in a request to have a separate vice president of student affairs, the young president leadership team to put an emphasis on student affairs. Not taking anything away from the previous vice presidents of academic and student affairs, but looking at Thomas Nelson and our needs, I thought it was important that we had someone sitting at the executive table not split by concentrating exclusively on student affairs. So right now, we now have a vice president of academic affairs and a vice president of student affairs concentrating on those two separate components. And I'm not comparing Thomas Nelson to some of the other community colleges, but we can. The closest colleges are Desiart and Remers and Third Marches and I'm not sure who is Fifth Marches. But more than likely, they have a cookie cutter vice president of student affairs. In terms of the deans, sorry, if you're talking about top-heavy in terms of academic deans in two thousand two, two thousand three, I believe, some of the colleges, I don't have the exact knowledge of it, I think, we had fewer than four deans and changed the academic programs to, from three to four. Is that correct? Can someone help me out? Is that correct? Can someone yell out, yes? So if we're talking about it in that regard, then yes, we moved from three deans to four deans. And even recently, because of the size of some of the departments, we made some organizational changes to try to optimize. But again, my approach, and I think some of the other colleges are looking at it, having one cookie cutter approach for all twenty-three community colleges is not necessarily the best way to go. But I don't have the exact answer in terms of if we are similar in terms of Desiart and Remers. But I know in terms of the vice president, probably we had one more because they have the same vice president of academic and student affairs. Good question.
Three more questions that were submitted in advance, but then we'll change some others. Morale seems to be steadily declining. This is evident just by walking around campus and talking to people. Is the administration aware that this is a problem affecting productivity and employee satisfaction?
Good question. Me personally, as president, I don't know if morale is steadily declining. Now I answer, now I answer this one. The question, and I said this to the faculty senate and I said it to the staff association, and it's one of the reasons that we're doing the time of survey to see if indeed what people are assuming is correct. And let me say this to you, and it's the same I said to the faculty senate. I don't know if we have surveyed all one hundred plus faculty to say morale is steadily declining. No one has said to me that when the faculty, that they're not getting their class loads, they're not providing the equipment and supplies that they need, that they're not receiving the training, et cetera, or they're not receiving the support services in the academic part. I don't know, but thank, it may be. But certainly, we've got the opportunity to address that. In terms of the staff, I've walked around campus in certain departments, morale needs to be increased. But in talking to some other departments, they would say morale is very high. It depends on what department you talk to. Is it an issue for Thomas Nelson? My emphasis is that morale is a love subject that we as an institution all have to deal with, all have to deal with. And we talked about it in the president cabinet. The vice presidents are aware, they are aware, that there are certain departments where there have been a lot of issues in terms of productivity, but a lot of issues in terms of efficiency. And then, there are certain departments who are understaffed. And I have said this numerous times, for a college our size, we should have a larger number of full-time faculty. We should have a larger number of full-time staff. But unfortunately, we are trying to change that and also increase that. But adding staff and adding faculty is just one part of the whole picture. Even adding money, as people say, money is not up. We try to address that particular area. But one of the key things that is a concern to me and dealing with morale is how we treat people. I am still not fully pleased that we treat everyone with respect here at Thomas Nelson. That's a concern of mine, had it, I said it properly. If I were able to sit down and talk to an electrician, I would hope that every single manager, leader would feel as comfortable doing the same thing because again, as I said to the new employees, just an example, how important an individual is not in the faculty classroom, not in the offices, but someone just walking across campus, I've given that story before. How we treat people helps in terms of morale. And what I said to the new employees is that family is important. I'll use one example. If you have a problem with family in the home, I expect that you to get up, say happily, and deal with family. Because that's important to me, that's the value that I have. And I said that to the new employees. And by dealing with it, your job will be here when you come back. As long as you let us know, follow the state guidelines, et cetera, et cetera, but the job will be you. That is, take the time to treat people with respect. Take the time to sit down and listen to them. And as you know, if you have a statement here and it goes down four deep, the statement has changed. That's why I take the time since I've been here to have a count of these. You know, I would have imagined that with all the state issues and costs, if I was a state employee, I would make certain that I would be here at this meeting today to find out what was going on. And what I know happened is that you would then have to go back and convey, and convey, and convey. And by the time it gets back to the fourth person, they also would say, well, the president stood up and said he's cutting funding positions and et cetera, et cetera. And I'd say, well, that's why we have the videotape. But in all seriousness, I think it concerns me if people are still walking around feeling that morale is declining because we tried to make concerted efforts to increase morale. Can we do that? The answer is yes. We need to do that? The answer is yes. But I am not convinced yet that morale is declining of, in dealing with all these seven hundred-plus employees because again, have we pulled the part-time faculty? I'm not certain, have we pulled all the P-14s? But because it is an issue, we will set up a client survey, give people the opportunity to let us know. But more importantly, I see that survey as an opportunity to help us improve. Not to thank the president, vice presidents of the deans, of staff, of faculty, but it's mechanism to help us improve and let us know where we can improve. And we ask you to please take the time to fill it out. Additionally, I know this is a long answer. We're taking the time to do a survey, a whole other student satisfaction survey because we want to take the time to find out how the students are feeling about the staff, faculty, services, and quality of instruction. So we're going to do it as a complete process. But the question is, are people aware? It's something that we keep on our agenda and keep in our discussions as well.
In time about that, I know we want to go ahead and address these questions, address some of yours. So how is our financial situation as far as P-14s are concerned? At this point, are they going to be cut back like last year?
The answer that I keep giving, and I knew it was going to come up again, and I gave you a guarantee. I know that's not, and I gave you a guarantee. The reason I put together, and put it together this task force is so that more people can be involved in the decision-making process. And again, as I said to the P-14s and staff, we're going to make every effort and they certainly don't have the same thing happen again. That's why we're starting in January. They have some discussions and some decisions made early. So there are cost savings. We can make them early, if we can find ways to bring more revenue, we'll work on that nail. But actually, I give a guarantee, if someone knows what the general assembly is going to do, by all means, let us know, you know what the governor's going to do in terms of cutting, by all means, let me know as soon as I know that I will be making decisions early.
Got that as one to the end. So opening up at this point to see if anyone has any other questions. If I were to take a read or to offer them forward.
Any question? Any general question? Any question in terms of the current, any questions you've heard groups about? Any questions in another department? Any question whatsoever? By all means, it's up for you to ask. Do you still want to write it down or you can't? Yes.
When you talked about the '08, '09 pay raises being held off until next July, does that mean that the normal pay rates from '09, '10 would be held off to the following July as well? Is this going to be an ongoing thing?
My understanding, reading the legislation, is that the governor's post is that once six, five, '09 started in July, his idea is to have that continue. So we every, certainly, whatever, a year, every July going forward starts to begin with that fiscal year. The thought is, from the general assembly, is that basically you're making a year and a half of savings to not give any raises, so it's starting every July one. Whether that will continue, the following legislative session may push it back, depending on how the revenue goes in the economy. If I ran down a half a dollar this year, I'd say that it did every July of that following. Good question. Anybody else guess?
Production of faculty staff doing basketball game?
Production of faculty staff do basketball game?
Results, yes.
Oh, results. You don't want a score, you just want to know if faculty are going to win.
Yes. So guarantee you'll take that tonight.
Unfortunately, I have no idea of faculty members and staff who are playing. Do you have? But if, if we rely on the coach, then absolutely you'll win. Okay, all right. For those of you who are new, I had the coach for the faculty staff game last year and we won some shit.
The other question is a good one, but why I say this, this really keeps you one for the end.
Did you have a question?
Um, I was talking about redoing the faculty staff directory. Has we been in discussion?
The question she asked is if, she brought to my attention, putting together faculty staff directory and everything that, the answer is yes, I bet with public relations, both and also human resources. And they're looking at trying to- folks, and also human resources, and they're looking at trying to put together, to one, update the online one, but also try to put together an actual brochure, so that people can go through on campus, people can go through a senior, individual names alphabetically, but also by the card. And so they're working on that. That's one of the issues for people that come in, and seeing some people doing the new employee orientation, new employee lunching, and that's one of the issues that they, that it's hard to know where we are when people call, and how, so the answer is definitely have some stuff, and I don't have the exact timeline, but it's something that we're working on. It's a good idea, appreciate it. Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, you have a question? Is that waving your hand? No? You were just waving, I saw.
Okay, I guess we'll have this one last speaker, then let's do something else.
You have a question? No? Yes? No? I'm sorry. Okay.
All right. You all saw the slide, and you were there. Dr. Taylor, how long have you been dancing, and where did you learn? And thank you for asking that about the P-pays, the opposite of what we can.
Okay. I didn't dance this time. Okay. I wasn't expecting that question.
We never know.
Anybody else have a guess? The answer is, I, I can't remember. But let me bring this to a close, if y'all, if y'all mind. Emphasis, emphasis again. We have a number of challenges ahead of us, but we have a number of staff who's been working on funding, we're working on enrollment, we're working on getting more financial aid to our students, and basically trying to move this institution forward. Try to keep the rumors and the issues down. If you have questions, please, 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 give them to the appropriate administrator, or get them to Murray Taylor, or Rudy Alia, or Dr. Fontaine, or any of those individuals. If you hear something, question, please give those questions to the appropriate vice president or director to our office, and go cry about, from Nelson, link or somewhere, get those issues addressed. But if they have a lax, if they have a lax excuse, we have dedicated staff, quality faculty, strong administrators, who are moving this institution forward. If we have any challenges, the only way that we can make a difference is if everybody works together. We've had success, it's mainly because of individuals in this room, and the doctors are not here making it happen. We have my commitment to continue to go through Richmond, fight for Thomas Nelson, we fight for U.S. individuals and as a collective. So we have that commitment from me, and again, as I mentioned to you, we'll continue to work hard, to continue to serve our students, and again, emphasize the impact of us in all we do. Thank you very much, and be very welcome.